This is weird. All right. Anybody online? There we go. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our September 10th, 2024 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly meeting both in council chambers and virtually on the Zoom webinar platform. And we are glad that you've joined us here tonight during the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda. Community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally and staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You'll then be able to make comment to council. We will start with members of the public who are joining us here in council chambers tonight and then those joining us remotely. We will have two public participation periods, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per each public participation session. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. With that, thank you again, and we will now begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Okay, with that, we'll begin with roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Kurtner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant, Acting Chief and Solicitor, here you have a forum. Thank you very much. First up tonight, we do have a presentation tonight from Birdtown USA. And we have Heidi Schiver here tonight, President of Birdtown, Pennsylvania, to present. So Heidi, if you want to make your way to the podium, and welcome.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight and congratulations on becoming a new Birdtown. Really excited to share with you a little bit more about the program. So we'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. I'm going to be a little quick because I know you have a lot on your calendar and schedule tonight. So this is, no, so go ahead and just next slide. No problem. Okay. Oops, let me go back. So our mission, I always like to start with our mission. It's Birdtown, Pennsylvania works in partnership with local municipalities like yourselves and like-minded organizations to promote community-based conservation actions to create a healthier, more sustainable environment, both for birds, wildlife and people. We've been actively engaged in the state for over 14 years now with 68 programs. We've doubled in two years. We're across 12 counties now. We're at Harrisburg and Pittsburgh as well, here as well as in southeast PA. Running the umbrella of Pennsylvania Audubon Council and partnering with other conservation groups, including We Can Serve PA, which runs the Environmental Advisory Council across the state, Audubon Chapters and the Bird City Network. Bird City Network is a national slash international program. So there are bird cities and bird towns sprinkled throughout our country. And we're one of the largest ones, I'm proud to say. These are the 68 bird towns that are in the different counties and we're growing. So a little bit about the PA Audubon Council, there are 20 Audubon Chapters across our state. The purpose is to serve the chapters and advocate for conservation and working together to share resources and ideas among in between the chapters and collaboration with other conservation partners. We are under their umbrella corporation, there are 501(c)(3), and we're working very closely with the Audubon Chapter to help establish Bird Towns across Pennsylvania. I just want to share a little bit about the local chapter that you'll be affiliated with. These are great folks that can provide services for you. This is some information about the Valley Forge Audubon Society. Their chapter territory covers over 1,200 square miles, includes all of Chester County, all of Delaware County, some of Montgomery County and parts of Philadelphia County. They provide information and resources and programming anywhere from first graders to senior citizens. They have a robust social media presence and they offer all sorts of things, including bird breeding field trips, hikes, photography outings and so on. So as you develop your Birdtown Committee here, they're a great resource for you. So why do we focus on birds? There's numerous reasons and I'm not going to go through all these tonight, but birds keep our ecosystems running smoothly, which is super important. Eat over 400 to 500 tons of insects a year. They scavenge carcasses, reducing diseases like rabies, distemper and plague, which is super critical. As you saw in India, India, there was a big problem with medication that was given to cattle. Their vultures all died and carcasses piled up and the plague returned to India. Ever since, even 20 years later, the populations of the vultures are still 90 to 90% down. So, you know, they're not the most attractive birds, but they're really important to our ecosystem. So that's just a really good, important example for that. It is proceeds provide pollination services and also help keep the mice and rat populations down. I'm going to jump down to the very bottom though, birds really need our help. The breeding bird surveys show populations declined anywhere from 30 to 77% and even more under certain species since 1970. And there are still falling, so that's why it's so important for us to be supporting them. This is just some examples, grassland birds especially are been hit by loss of habitat. And migratory birds, I like to bring them up this time of year, migration really started around August 15th, goes through October 15th. And beautiful birds like Baltimore Orioles, their populations are down. They get hit by loss of habitat, not only in our hemisphere, but also the southern hemisphere. These are the threats to bird populations, like I mentioned, loss of habitat. Cats, cats kill 2.4 billion birds a year. Window collisions are a huge problem. They're confused by glass and light, pesticides, climate change, invasive species and plastics. These are all major threats to bird populations. So what we do is to address these issues through engagement, education, encouragement, support, inspiration and promoting awareness. These are examples of what a Birdtown Committee can do. It depends on the municipality, what they want to focus on, but can be holding native plant pop-up gardens, developing proclamations, resolutions and ordinances that might address invasives or native plants, pesticides and so on. Supporting and running fun citizen science programs that are very meaningful, including the Christmas Backyard Bird Count, planting trees and shrubs to create green corridors and reduce runoff and build up those riparian buffer zones and so much more. So what we provide for your municipality is a statewide structured program with congruous goals, concrete resources and achievable actions. Our framework for community networking with other Bird Towns and conservation partners that include avenues of communication, events and volunteer opportunities and so on. We also provide training and workshops for our Birdtown leaders and there's more opportunities and success in obtaining funding by working together. Whoops. This is our website. We really encourage everyone to visit it, has a rich array of resources. A list of all our conservation partners and Bird Towns, you're included in the website as well. And we have a special back page that I went over with your staff yesterday, just showing all the different resources and contact lists that are available to you now as a Birdtown. For communications and networking, I think it's really important to have lots of touch points with our Birdtown leaders. So we have a number of ways to do that. We have two meetings a year. We also have a Birdtown Flyer, which is our bi-monthly newsletter. Bird Beat, which is a quarterly newsletter meant for our community members as well as our Birdtown leaders, giving them seasonal tips. And then finally, our Birdtown Forum, which is a private Facebook page. This is our regional networking. This is a chance for our Birdtown leaders to come together and we call them Birdtown Clutches. These are all the different ones would be in the Lehigh Valley Clutch. They have a meeting on September 25th. They're going to be going to a bird banding at Willistown Trust Conservation and see what that's all about. These are the five strategy areas that we encourage our Birdtown leaders to focus on, just to make sure they don't focus on one area of the community, but across the entire community. And it's a tiered program. You're starting at the green level to really encourage you to move up to the next levels in the next year or so. And these are the qualifications and goals that need to be achieved to accomplish those. This is the strategies, goals and activity worksheet that we encourage you to work and use. It provides inspiration and guidance. It's numbered and color-coded and it has two really important threats running through it, habitat enhancement and addressing threats to birds. Excuse me. And this is the welcome packet that we went over yesterday with your staff about all the different wonderful things you get as a Birdtown. So congratulations, Phoenixville, or congratulations on becoming a Birdtown, so. I really look forward to working with all of you. Does anyone have a question about the program that I can answer quickly?
Well done.
Well, thank you so much for having me. Congratulations again. And like I said, I really look forward to working with all of you.
Right? Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have a first round of public participation. Any members of the public wishing to make any comments tonight? If you make your way up to the podium, we do ask that you sign in on the paper sheet that's provided and let us know if your your name and if you're a resident or business owner here in the borough. And then any members of the public who are joining us on the Zoom platform, if you want to raise your hand digitally as they pop up, our member of our staff will select you and unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you can make comment to council tonight.
I have no hands raised, Mr. President.
Okay, well, there is a second round of public participation towards the end of the agenda, so we will move on from that and move on to our consent agenda tonight. Items on our consent agenda, are there any questions or any items that any members of council would like to have withdrawn from consent? Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And moving on to council and communications and council participation and the updates from council tonight. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, it is your time for the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all of those who are joining us here today in person and those who are joining us virtually at home. A couple of things to note in the past month that we've had. We want to wish a very special happy one-year anniversary to Pat Merriman and the team at Boardroom, one of our newer locations at 101 Bridge. They just celebrated one year of when Pat took over that business. So congratulations to the team. Also, we would like to thank the Phoenixville Area School District, all of our first responders, including our Phoenixville Police Department, our EMS and our Phoenixville Fire Department, who all were part of the first responder cookout and the community picnic, which we had at the Phoenixville Area School District last Friday. So thank you so much. It was a great event. Many people in the community came out for that. And so it was wonderful to be together and to celebrate the start of a new year. We do have coming up in the next month, a crescendo of Phoenixville. As many of you know, they provide free violin lessons to students in our school district. They're having an event on the 14th. The Sir Optimist is having a bingo on the 15th. On the 21st, a very unique program here in Phoenixville that supports better days ahead. It's the Mrs. Roper Bar Crawl. If you haven't found that on Facebook, last year it was attended by over 1,100 people, all dawning Mrs. Roper's famous caftan. So take a look at that on Facebook. The clinic, the Phoenixville Free Clinic is having a field day on the 22nd of September. And on the 26th of September, we will be having a senior fair is taking place at the Recreation Center. So highly encourage anyone who'd like to participate in that. Bistro on Bridge on the 28th of September will be hosting an Oktoberfest. And finally, on October 5th, Sedona Tap House will be having a special commemorative program for first responders. And so check out any of those locations, those businesses or those organizations for exciting things to do this month. Thank you all again. Of course, thank you for being part of this extraordinary community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, moving on to section eight, tonight's agenda, we have our monthly call for residents interested in being appointed in various boards, commissions and committees. Current vacancies exist on Civil Service Commission and Tree Advisory Commission. In our consent agenda, we did appoint a vacancy to our Human Relations Commission. So we appreciate Kevin volunteering for that position. Again, any members of our public who are interested in volunteering on any boards, committees or commissions, please reach out to your councilperson or a member of staff. We're happy to walk you through the simple process it is on the various boards to take part on. With that, move on to item nine of tonight's agenda, which is new business. First on the docket, we have our Civil Service Commission revisions to the rules and regulations. Scott, did you want to give background on this prior or? Were we teed up?
I think we're pretty teed up and to be honest, Gene might be able to give background better than I. As you may know, the Civil Service Commission has their own regular solicitor. So I've been involved, but more tangentially.
Gene, if you want to give us some background before we motion?
Sure. The vast majority of the changes were updating the regulations as it relates to the fire department. Because as we begin to grow the organization, once we go into hiring mode for the third fireman, it involves civil service and the review of the regs showed that there was a lot of deficiencies there. So over the course of the last three, I think since June, we've been working back and forth with staff, their solicitor and the Civil Service Commission to update those. They reviewed them last week at their meeting and are making the recommendation to council tonight to adopt those. And when they do, as soon as we incorporate those, they'll be in position because you've already authorized the Civil Service Commission to begin the process of a list, eligibility list, they'll start moving in that direction.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt the Civil Service Commission recommendations, revisions to the rules and regulations.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Next item, we have a request to authorize a letter to Chester County Commissioners regarding borough's redistricting. I believe council's up to date on this issue. What is council's pleasure? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this item?
Can you kind of outline what you would plan to communicate?
Gina, Scott, you want to?
Sure. So as you know, we passed our redistricting and the procedure from a legal standpoint is then we have to provide our decision to the county voter services, which then, under the Pennsylvania state law, has to petition the Court of Common Pleas to implement our redistricting. Due to various factors, the county solicitor's office was unable to do this prior to the 2024 primaries. Since then, I've followed up with the county solicitor's office numerous times. And I'm either told that something's going to happen soon or I don't receive any response at all. So my last inquiry was August 26th, to which I received no response. And there is no action on the docket of the filing on the court since April of 2024. So obviously, you know, we have concerns. We want to make sure that our redistricting is in place for the 2025 primaries because that's when those boundaries are really going to matter.
I did have a question. Is there one member of the county commissioner, commission who has particular responsibility for voter services or is it just kind of a group responsibility?
Currently, the chair does hold the board on the Elections Commission Committee. So it would be the chair of the county commissioners. So we'll be addressing it specifically to them. Okay, any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We have our annual chemical bids.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation toward the 2025 chemical bids.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on our chemical bids for the 2025? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, we have a need for a new civil service list for police.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to authorize the Civil Service Commission begin the process of developing an eligibility list for patrolmen of for the Phoenixville Police Department.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion for a new eligibility list? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our public hearings.
All right, I will entertain a motion to recess our public meeting and enter into a public hearing on the proposed amendment to Part Six, impact statements of the borough subdivision and land development ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? All right, we are now in a public hearing. So this ordinance amendment is to update the impact statements required to accompany land development applications in the borough, including by updating the traffic impact study requirements, updating the environmental impact study requirements, removing the, excuse me, removing the market analysis requirement and removing the community and fiscal impact study requirement. This ordinance was advertised in the Posttown Mercury on August 29th, 2024 and September 3rd, 2024. Copies of the proposed ordinance amendment were sent to the Chester County Law Library and the Posttown Mercury on August 28th, 2024 for public access. I'll introduce the following exhibits into the record of this hearing. Exhibit B1 is a copy of the ordinance. Exhibit B2 is a review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated August 21, 2024. Exhibit B3 will be review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated August 22nd, 2024. Exhibit B4, a copy of the public notice for the consideration of the ordinance. B5, proof of publication from the Posttown Mercury for the two advertised dates. As is common, we do not yet have that in hand, but it will be an exhibit upon receipt. And Exhibit B6, letters to the borough, to the Posttown Mercury and the Chester County Law Library dated August 20. I'm sorry, I have the wrong date. But I have them as exhibits, so. Dated August 28th, 2024, providing copies of the ordinance for public access. So as council knows, we are constantly looking at our ordinances to see where we can improve and make sure that our ordinances match our practice. The revisions in this ordinance amendment do a little bit of both. So the traffic impact study amendment really kind of does two things. First, it reflects our current practice that the borough traffic engineer prepares a traffic study. Or I'm sorry, changes the current practice where the borough traffic engineer prepares a traffic study for the developer. We're changing this because periodically this creates an issue when the developer and the borough have different ideas of what is reasonable. And then the borough traffic engineer can be caught in the middle. As a result, this amendment proposes to match the procedure that most other municipalities follow, whereby the developer has their own traffic engineer prepare a traffic impact study and the borough traffic engineer does an in-depth review of that study and on an independent basis. And this is kind of similar to how land developments treat the civil engineering side. You know, the developer has their civil engineer prepare the plans and the borough engineer reviews those plans and makes comments on them. So the other major change is the current requirement in the traffic impact study applies that requirement to developments with 30,000 or more square feet of building floor area and/or 30 or more dwelling units. This amendment also includes developments with nine or more lots as being a type of development that is required to submit a traffic impact study. So as you may have noted, the PRPC review letter suggests that the amendment should be revised to include trails and pedestrians and cyclists in the traffic impact study. And you know, in my discussions with staff, we agree and that was our intent. So we do disagree that this amendment doesn't do so. It has been my experience that the modern definition of traffic and municipal and development context is really these days, an umbrella term that includes multimodal transportation, not limited to vehicular traffic, but also pedestrian and cyclist. This is how our consultants have reviewed projects in the past and we expect them to continue to do so. So moving on to the environmental impact study. Here, the amendment changes two things primarily. It expands upon the specifics of what we want to see in an environmental impact study. If you look at our current ordinance provision and what's proposed, what is proposed is much longer because it gets into those specifics. This amendment also limits the requirement to provide an environmental impact study to large projects. And those are similar to the projects that fall under the traffic impact study being those involving 30,000 or more square feet of new building floor area, 30 or more dwelling units or 30 or more lots. And as council has seen, we're consistently asked for and approve waivers of the environmental impact study for smaller developments. So this is a case really where our amendment is seeking to match our practice. Next, getting into the market analysis, we are removing the requirement for analysis of the fiscal viability of a project and its impact on the downtown commercial district. I think, you know, I can speak for all of council and we say, we certainly hope that all projects are successful and have positive impacts on the community. However, the financial likelihood of each project being a success is really outside the scope of our review. It is not an area that we are permitted to regulate based upon, under the MPC. And that takes us to the community and fiscal impact analysis. And we are removing the requirement that analyses be conducted related to the social and demographic characteristics, tax revenues versus tax burden relationship and impact on public services and utilities. And as you may have noticed, the PRPC review letter had some objection to this part of the amendment as well. However, our thinking here was that the laws, similar to the market analysis, the laws that provide the borough with jurisdiction to review developments don't allow us to regulate developments on some of the things covered by the community and fiscal impact analysis and some it does. However, we are not permitted under state law to receive a market or, excuse me, a community and fiscal impact analysis and it contain a result and then ask a developer to change the development based on something we don't like in that analysis. Instead, what we need to do is we need to have specific regulations in our ordinance that set guide rails for what those developments need to include. So and for the things we are permitted to regulate, I believe we already have those in place. And some examples are specific ordinances related to stormwater management requirements, specific ordinances related to sanitary sewer requirements, specific ordinances related to water and sewer capacity, solid waste management, environmental requirements, et cetera. Now, there are some other goals and evaluation that we are not able to regulate. And some of those are the social and demographic characteristics expected in developments and the tax revenue versus tax cost analyses. Those are beyond the scope of what we can regulate in our ordinances. And that doesn't mean that they're not good goals. There are similar goals to what we have in our own comprehensive plan. But there are certain things that we want to foster and we try to foster, but cannot be included in our subdivision and land development ordinance in this way. And one of the ways we try to regulate that is to allow for certain types of uses in certain zones. It's kind of what our zoning ordinance does and that's kind of how we can try to foster those things. So as a result, in the things that we can regulate, I believe we already have the ordinances in place and some of the things we can't regulate. And this community and fiscal impact analysis becomes a superfluous document that doesn't provide us much new information and we are also constantly getting waiver requests for it. So that's a summary of what this ordinance does. Are there any questions or comments regarding the proposed ordinance from council?
Yes, Mr. Berkeley. Comment, I'd like to thank the solicitor for that in-depth explanation of the ordinance and the reviews involved. So thank you for that.
I'll just comment as rep to the Planning Commission. One thing I have experienced is that typically the request for waivers for these two reports are almost routinely granted. There's rarely a pushback by the Planning Commission for the waivers. I haven't had a chance to dig into the two, the two letters, so I'm interested in digging into that when we have the full discussion. But if the part of the effort in this is to simply move that issue from being constantly requested to be waived, I think that makes, that makes sense. Because otherwise, we're just, you know, we shouldn't be waiving things if we have it in our ordinance on a routine basis. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if nothing else from council, I want to open it up to the public if anybody has a comment on this proposed ordinance. Okay, if nothing else from council, I want to open it up to the public if anybody has uh, a comment on this proposed ordinance. Anyone here in person who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, anyone on the Zoom platform?
Mister Solicitor, there's no hands raised.
All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. Uh, period on the proposed ordinance, and I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume our public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are back in our public meeting, and I would entertain a motion on the. Uh, proposed subdivision and land development ordinance amendment to part six impact studies.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance repealing and replacing chapter twenty-two SOTO part six impact statement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance carries eight zero.
Hey, with that, we'll move on to section eleven of tonight's agenda, resolutions and ordinances. We have uh, three items tonight on the agenda. What is council's pleasure for accepting the dedication right away on Evergreen and Heckle Streets?
I'd like to make a motion uh, accepting the dedication, the right of way of Evergreen Lane Heckle Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the motion? Pretty straightforward, need a little extra anyway. It's there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Our annual MMO obligation, uh, what is council's pleasure for?
Mister President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the twenty twenty-five minimum municipal. Obligation for uniform and non-uniform pension plans.
Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mister Weiss. Questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, up tonight, we have a consideration of a um, ask to waive Soudo for twenty-two Evergreen Lane. Uh, Mister Solicitor, if you want to give us some background on this, since it's a bit unusual?
Sure, so Evergreen Lane Properties LLC by its principal Mark Garrity, who's here uh, this evening. Has requested a waiver of land development related to the property located at twenty-two Evergreen Lane. The applicant desire, excuse me, desires to remove the existing dwelling and construct a duplex on the property. Typically, a project like this would not be subject to our subdivision and land development ordinance. However. Since it is considered to be cumulative to the Evergreen Lane land development project uh, that we just accepted the right of way from. Uh, it does, under the technical terms of the municipality's planning code, fall within our subdivision and land development ordinance. Um. So this project is unique uh, to some others in that the traffic and stormwater runoff was evaluated during the Evergreen Lane development. And the utilities were actually designed and stubbed on this property for the current request. Um. The borough engineer has reviewed this request. And uh, there's a review letter in the packet um, from Owen Heine at RVE. Uh, recommending conditional approval of the waiver of land development um, for this project. And the conditions he requested were that um. I, I don't have them all memorized, but two of the main uh, conditions were that. Uh, an engineered plan sheet be prepared and a stormwater management or uh, BMP. Operation and maintenance agreement be entered into and recorded. Um. With Mark Garrity being here today, would you like to add anything? I- if you do, please approach the microphone.
Uh, thank you. Um, we, I did get the letter back today. Uh, every single item will be, will comply. That's no problem at all. We're happy to meet all requirements. Thank you. Unless you could.
But, but we can see if uh, council has any questions for you.
Yeah.
Any questions from council for Mister Garrity?
Oh, I guess for Scott, uh, with the cumulative nature of the project. Uh, nothing's being cha- or, nothing's being sidestepped by having this extra parcel done after the fact of the. Original three that were done two years ago.
Right.
So nothing's.
Correct.
Nothing, no allevi- you know, nothing's being alleviated or, or missed. This was all engineered as part of a. Sort of phased plan, and this is a, a phase of it, is there?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't even say it's a phase of it. So the municipality's planning code. Um, provides for uh, cumulative projects falling under subdivision land development. Basically, so someone doesn't do. One house or one property, and then a next door do the next house and another property, and then next door do the next house and the next property. And completely avoid our subdivision land development process. Um, it, in this case, uh, Mister Garrity did go through our subdivision and land development process. A- and this just happens to be um, a parcel that abuts his prior development.
And Mark, uh, just looking at, you know, the, the bird's eye view of this, you have the, you recently built a driveway along the western edge. That's considered as the Asbeld driveway?
Yes.
And then is that being removed?
That would be my plan, yeah, because you have a new driveway going in.
Okay, so it's not, because it. Looking at the plan, not, not knowing the full background on this, um. You know, it looks like there's kind of like a pocket there. If you had have left that driveway to pop in another building, it's not your intent to build another building in this parcel?
Today, that is not my intent, no.
Okay. But if that were to happen, it would still come in under the contiguous nature of the plan.
Well, and it would have to come in because it would require a subdivision of that lot.
Good. This is my questions.
Any other questions from council?
Entertain a motion?
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that Phoenixville Borough Council adopt a resolution condit- conditionally approving. The waiver of the formal land development requirements for the proposed project at twenty-two Evergreen Lane, subject to the following conditions. The project must be revised to comply with the borough engineer review letter prior to the issuance of any building permits, including the preparation of an engineered plan. The construction shall be limited to that shown on the waiver request submission. The stormwater management BMP operation and maintenance agreement satisfactory to the borough solicitor shall be entered into by the applicant. And recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits and all costs shall be borne by the applicant. And further authorizing the borough manager and borough solicitor to issue a written resolution consistent with this motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes eight zero. Thank you very much, Mister Garrity.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports committees, uh, I'm sorry, reports of committees, boards and commissions, we have Harv, Miss Dugan.
We handled everything on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Planning Commission, Mister Moore?
Sorry, nothing to report. Uh, we did not have an August meeting. Our next meeting will be this coming Thursday uh, at six PM. Uh, that's September twelfth.
Mister Kirkman with PRPC.
Not much going on with PRPC, although the next meeting. Um, the twenty-fifth of September. We are going to have a presentation from Tom Fraley, the executive director of the Schuylkill River. Passenger Rail Authority to give us an update on that. And thank you to the mayor for um, making that connection so we could make that happen.
Thank you. Miss Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, we have a bunch of special events and uh, camps coming up, so we'll start off with. Uh, the nurse on-site blood pressure check, that there's a date and time change beginning on October second, it'll be Wednesdays. Uh, Wednesdays of the month from twelve to one. Parents' night out, bring the kids in, go out for an evening, September twentieth from five thirty to eight thirty. The mobile salt cave, the uh, dated that is nine, four, nine, eighteen, ten, two, and ten, sixteen. And that's a therapeutic thing from the salt cave. Um, uh, puppy yoga is September eighteenth from six to seven. There is an open mic, it's a free event to join and attend October twelfth from one thirty to three thirty. The annual fall uh, trunk or treat is October twenty-sixth from twelve to three. The Fall Fest there, that's real good one, keep that one on your calendars. The Young Rembrandt's Halloween class, October twenty-sixth from two to three thirty. And then this, there's a couple schools out camps, and that is a FaceTime Theater, October third from nine to four, November fourth. From nine to one and November twenty-fifth, uh, November twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh from time nine to one. There is also Young Rembrandt's, October third and fourth and twen- and November fourth and November twenty-fifth. Uh, full and half day, eight thirty to five. The youth co-ed sports camp, November twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh from nine to three. Then there's a youth and adult programs, table tennis, that's, we have an added Wednesday's evening from nine, six to nine. That's just a drop-in. The music, mind, and mixing with the spin therapist, and this is n- new. Enjoy the self-expression and mood enhancements while learning hands-on, state-of-the-art DG, DJ equipment. That's for youth and adults and all abilities, September sixteenth to December nineteenth. Ramp-up skateboarding, September nineteenth to November fourteenth from four forty-five to seven. Fundamentals of tennis and the basics of tennis, that's a ball clinic. On Saturday, September, Saturday, September seventh to the twenty-eighth. The Soul and Sky Yoga and Mindfulness Program. That is for youth, adults, and all abilities yoga. There's family yoga Tuesdays every other week starting on nine, ten. And then the STEM Spire is a student-run program Mondays from six to seven. Junior NBA uh, basketball, that's September ninth to October uh, tenth. Oh, from October. Tenth and twenty-third, I don't have the dates right there. Uh, youth volleyball, September sixteenth to October twenty-eighth. And finally, pickleball clinics, youth and adult classes, September fourteenth to October twelfth. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Miss Dugan. Uh, TAC with Mister Carmine Neil.
Uh, Tree Advisory Commission met last night. We heard from a number of residents with cons- uh, few residents with concerns. Um, about borough entries and staffs looking into those. Um. We are planning our fall tree um, planting and those sites will be selected in the next couple of weeks. And um, that's all we have to report. Next meeting being a month.
Sounds good. Miss Berkeley with HRC.
Yeah, we had our meeting for September last Wednesday. We're always, we meet at the rec center the first Wednesday of every month. Um, we did just fill our commission again um, with the appointment from tonight. Uh, we are working towards filling out the MIE scorecard. Um, so that is in the works, um, and we'll be rotating, working on that and doing training with the PA HRC. Um, over the next few months.
Very good, and back to you for PPS.
No action to report. I think everything really major um, was coming out of civil service anyway. Um, we have, we did have some good discussion, just wrapping, as we're getting closer to wrapping up. The summer season, um, so there'll be more to come from that on um. The open air, and then also we did have some good preliminary discussions that I think are going to come to finance and budget, which I'm excited about, about personnel.
Yeah, Mister Moore with uh, Parks and Rec.
Uh, nothing further to report that wasn't already handled in the consent agenda. Uh, just want to remind people, we have. Very uh, Phoenixville Green Earth Festival in the morning at the um, farmer's market, the forty-second anniversary Andre Thornton Day. At Andre Thornton Park in the afternoon, and also Wolf Jam in um, twenty twenty-four in, in Reeves Park. So um, lots to do, plus Phoenixville inside out uh, uh, this weekend.
Great, thank you. Mister Carmine Neil with part of policy.
Yes, Mister President, under policy, I would like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance demanding chapter thirteen licenses, part seven. Peddlers, transient retailers, handbills, advertising, and banners.
Second.
Motion by Mister Carmine Neil, second by Miss Berkeley, questions on the motion?
So this came into policy last month. Um, over the summer, we heard from a number of residents. Uh, expressing frustration over um, solicitate, solicitation, some aggressive solicitation from. Pest control companies and others. Um, so we researched a no-knock list, which is what's. Being pr- which was, what's being considered um, in this motion. To advertise, in the advertising in this motion. Um, so it'll be ma- a list maintained by the police department that we could, residents could. Uh, triannually, is that every three years? Every three years sign up for and be included on a list that when hopefully. Uh, uh, when they come in for permits. Solicit- slit, people who want to solicit in the borough, come in for permits. That they would receive this list and not knock on residents' doors who are included. So that was what we discussed in policy, and that is what. We are considering.
Questions on the motion to uh, schedule and advertise? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Uh, and a few other items of policy we discussed, um, there was a stop sign on Second Avenue before us. Which was not, which the police department warranted not necessary, so we took no action, denied that uh. What's that? First Avenue, sorry, First Avenue. Uh, so we took no act, or we denied that the stop sign request there. Also, we discussed a bamboo ordinance and basis specie ordinance, and that will be coming forward shortly. That's it. Next meeting is in a month. Two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, James. With that, Mister Weiss with ITTTS.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister President. Uh, just two updates. Uh, one, we were delighted to receive a Pennsylvania multimodal transportation. Fund grant for uh, just shy of nine hundred thousand dollars to round out our Bridge Street and. Star Street intersection update project, so we're very excited about that. Um, and then uh, just celebrating again our uh. Uh, um, a Bird Town designation that we were uh, hearing about earlier tonight. Um, other than that, uh, lots going on. Always love visitors. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the seventeenth at seven PM.
Thank you. Miss Dugan with finance.
Everything was covered in the consent agenda.
Thank you. With that, we will open up the second and final round of public participation. Members of the public joining us on the Zoom platform can raise their hand digitally. Uh, any members of the public joining us here in council chambers, please make your way up to the podium, and we just ask that you sign in and provide whether you're a borough resident or business owner. And your name.
Mister President, I have no hands raised.
Thank you, Miss Logan. With that, we'll close the second and final round of public participation. Is there any communications or council participation for the second round? Of item fifteen, seeing none, we'll move on to staff reports. All items are in your packets tonight for manager, police, fire, planning, public. Works, finance, human relations, and recreation. Uh, one note that we'd just like to make at the bottom of your agenda, we do have our upcoming meetings listed for the next uh, five weeks or so. And then also, we just want to take a moment to recognize our some, uh, our September anniversaries for our very uh. Uh, loyal and diligent staff that we have here. We have uh, off- officer Elizabeth Wakely celebrating eighteen years. We have Corporal Andy Brown with ten years in the police department. Alex Keefe has been five years in, at water distribution. Tyrone Taylor has been with sanitation for four years. Ann Watkins has been our Parks and Rec assistant for two years, and Eric Johnson is celebrating his first anniversary at Wastewater. So we do appreciate everybody's anniversaries and uh, their commitment to making the borough a better place. Uh, with that, our agenda is wrapped, uh, and we have no need for executive session tonight. What is council's pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
With that, we are adjourned. Have a great night. We'll see you next month.